There we go. All right. Good evening. Shall we go ahead and get started with our interviews with potential council members? Just to remind everybody, each candidate will be given 30 minutes and each council member will have the opportunity to ask up to three questions. No more than three questions. Other than that, I believe, Paula, you are up first.
Good evening, everyone.
Did you want to say anything first before we ask any questions? Or how do you feel, Paula?
I feel pretty good. I hope you all, you know, consider the candidates here very thoughtfully. And I believe you all are capable of doing so. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and to be given a half hour. That's a lot of time to talk about oneself. But we'll see how it goes.
All right. So how about if we go ahead and just work our way down the council here? I will ask last, but we'll go ahead and start with Jared first. Jared, would you like to ask Paula a question?
Point of clarification, Erin, are we are limited to the questions?
No.
No, you're not. Okay. Let me get the page number that those are on.
Do you want me to move on?
Yes, please. If you could come back to me.
That's no problem. All right.
Questions are on page six of the packet.
Councilman DeYoung, would you like to start then?
I reserve this time.
Okay. So Councilman Owen?
Okay, I'll ask Paula a question.
Okay.
I read your little presentation you put in the paper. You were on the Internet when you applied for this position. And you're well qualified. And I know you've been dealing with the city for quite a few years. But anyway, as you know, I'm really avid for the city, Main Street. And what I would like to ask you, how you feel and what could you do to accomplish this? It needs a facelift, you know that. I would like to ask you if you could do that, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Chuck. Well, as you may have seen in a post by Ian Larson, I am now the vice president of the Downtown Merchants Association or the Downtown Association for this timeframe. I've definitely kind of limited my role on that for the time being in the sense that I have not had the opportunity to present before my own board of directors at the chamber, how they feel about one of the aspects of vice president as described by Ian was that there would be fundraising required in that position. And I like to be real clear that when I'm doing something for different entities that I'm not creating a conflict of interest. But the Downtown Merchants Association is something I've been a part of for quite some time before it became an entity. In that when Sharon Dillon was mayor, she asked me to work on it at that time. And we tried to get a Downtown Association going then. It just didn't happen. We couldn't get enough of the local merchants to get involved. And there is certain criteria for becoming a part of a Main Street program that has to be met. Now, since that time, we've had other mayors and we've had... Erin joined the city manager position. He has been a person that has done a lot of research on it and looked into what is it going to take. And plus, they've reopened it up. 10 years ago, when Mount Verden became a part of the program, they shut it down. They didn't let anybody else in from the state of Washington. And so all we could be then was an affiliate. And I attended several of the conferences. There's one that's happening in April. And I'm considering attending that one as well with Ian and Julia and Brenda, I believe, are also going. And I want to be a part of it. I think that it's important. I think that there's certain things that can be done. I believe a lot has already been accomplished downtown because of the impetus of new businesses that are actually solid businesses. For a while, we'd see somebody come in with an idea, but without the capital to do what they intended to do, and they'd be gone in six months or a year. And that doesn't help our community. It didn't help us financially. It didn't help us with our facelifting. The other part of that is things like awnings. Awnings are a big part of what our face looks like in downtown. I was just talking to Louis Requa, and he's in the process of just having powder coated the metal parts of his awnings. And he's ordered the canvas for them. And Joyce Bakery just did theirs. And I noticed that we've lost the one that kind of got burnt a little bit in the fire last year next to the burnt out building. But does that answer your question, Chuck? Or did...
Yes, it does. Yes. I would love to get involved with it too, because before I pass on, I'd love to see Seadrawley look nice and where it can attract tourists. And the malls are beginning to fail, and it's a good time for shops to come into town. You know, we've got over 10,000 people. And if we could get 5,000 or 6,000 of them to shop in Seadrawley, it would really be a plus.
That's why I would definitely sponsor that shop, small program.
Yeah. I think it would be an asset to Seadrawley. And you know a lot of people and a lot of avenues that we don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
I'm impressed with you.
Thank you.
I don't really have any more questions.
All right. All right. Thank you. Brenda?
Paula, you just kind of touched on this, but I'll come at it from a different angle. How do you envision downtown Seadrawley in 10 years? What is your vision for it?
You know, I think that for those of us who have lived here a long time, we tend to look back and say, gosh, I can remember when there were three shoe stores and there was a J.C. Penney's and there was all these other things in downtown. We're not going to see as much of that in the future. Too many sales are on the Internet and stuff. But one thing that really comes to mind every time I go somewhere is uniqueness. The more we emphasize how unique we are in Seadrawley, what each shop brings that's... You know, like Shelley Shack to me is an amazing store. And one of the reasons is because she has such an interesting mix of things. Woolly Market has brought in a lot of people. Recently, I was talking to Timmy Boderoff, and I hope I'm not slaying her name. But she is opening a business in the Riker Nebe Building where they were. She is bringing her business up from Snohomish, the city of Snohomish, not the county, but the county too, I guess. And I asked her, well, what prompted you to come to Seadrawley? And she says, well, I saw that you had a tap room here in town. And, you know, my clients like tap rooms. And I thought, wow, that just happened last year. And then I had talked to Jake not too many months before that. And I asked him the same question, what brought you to Seadrawley? And he says, well, you know, that Woolly Market is just amazing. So what we need to do is to keep focusing on what makes us unique and what kind of shops we want to kind of recruit and look for as we're out there in the other communities.
Okay. I think we're each going to ask a question.
Oh, just one?
And we'll cycle back through. Yeah. So, hi, Jermaine.
Thank you, Paula. You're welcome. Brenda totally stole my question.
Written down before you.
But I will ask, when you said uniqueness, it made me think about our niche here. And what do you see as a niche that you think would have the most benefit for Seadrawley? I mean, what do you think... When you say uniqueness, you're talking about certain businesses. But what about basically the facade or the look of Seadrawley or what we want people to think about Seadrawley as far as what our niche is?
Well, I think our basic architecture is sound. I think that it definitely needs facelifts in many places. But with that word, unique, what I see in that is that we're not going to become the next place for box stores so much. We're going to be the place that you find a mountain biking shop because you've just learned that you can bike on Limon Mountain. And that's something that E-DESK is currently pursuing, is the idea of having... developing a biking trail up on that mountain. And outdoor recreation is certainly a big thing. Jared's dad can attest to that. He's always up there with the Northwest Mountain Cruisers, Glacier Cruisers. And so, you know, there are plenty of outdoor opportunities. And that's what makes us a place that we want to get people to pull off the highway, find the things they need right here in town. And, you know, yeah, they're going to have brought some of their stuff from REI up from Seattle. But E-DESK thinks we can get REI to sponsor something like that trail on Limon Mountain. So I think that's kind of what I'd like to see, Jermaine.
Thank you. Judith?
Oh, such interesting things we've been talking about. I'm looking at these... Okay. I'll go with one of the questions on the thing. Let's see how you... What weaknesses in city policy and procedures that you would like to work on as a member of the council? Can I look at my notes? It was number five.
Thank you. Okay. So what I said was public perception of government as a whole seems to have suffered in recent years. And I believe much can be to improve that perception. And one of the things that I feel has been a strength for Seadrawley is their utility bills coming out and having information that's really beneficial to myself. You know, I see... I get those things in the mail and I think, oh, I didn't know about that, you know? And then the City Scene Magazine, it's been really amazing. And people are definitely choosing to advertise in it because it does such a beautiful job of highlighting our community. And just today, I was hosting the Cascade Loop Association's board meeting at the Chamber office. And I handed them out all over to these people because some of them had never been to Seadrawley. And so I had an opportunity to say, hey, this is something we do right here in Seadrawley. This is our town. This is what we look like and this is where we want to, you know, go. As far as weaknesses go, I think that we're still looking to, you know, to recapitalize on what we've had in the past. And we know that we're really a very hardy group of people in this area. It takes a lot to knock us down, to, you know, make us go away. I had one lady tell me one time that if it was time for the town to die, it was time for it to die. And I just looked at her like, are you crazy? I'm not giving up on this town. I love it. And I plan to be here the rest of my life, so...
All right. Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
And Jared?
I'm just trying to think the best way to frame my question. What do you believe that the city council, city government could do to work with the Main Street program or the chamber to really solidify our identity? You know, when I talk to business owners, property owners, they think we're doing good things, but they ask, you know, who is Seadrawley? You know, because I think if you ask somebody, who is Leavenworth or who is Winthrop or, you know, what... How can we work as a government to really strengthen our identity for our city?
Good point. It is. It's certainly something that we have struggled with for quite a few years. And yet, like our Woodfest thing this year, one of the things that we're doing on it is we've subtitled it Timbered Attack. And I believe that's where we are. You know, we've been a timber community for years. Even when Skagit Steel was at its peak, what was it promoting? I mean, what was it building? It was building towers for logging. And so now we're becoming a lot more technological. We've got the Swift Center going in. I think that we can look at our past and go to our future. And I think that as long as we keep in focus that this is who we were, I think we always need to have that part of us and to recognize how those people really built this community, but not to be afraid to go in a new direction as well and to... I think that the downtown group, the chamber, and the city should all have like a public forum where we bring in people and we say, okay, give us your ideas, just like we did for the library. We said, what do you want to see in a library? Well, maybe we need to do that as a public meeting and really get an idea of what other people would like to see here as well and how they identify themselves within the community. And I think that'd be a good place to start.
Definitely. Thank you.
Carl?
Really appreciate it. It's a lot of interest. I really appreciate the questions we ask. And I'm really upset about it. And do you want to say for exposure that I've been a volunteer for Woodfest as well as a member of the community? Well, Ward 4 and Ward 6, I'm sure, both of them are coming. But all of them are here a lot. It's the traffic lanes here in the streets. But their ideas are for traffic lanes, for education, for education, for forest, for justice. Well, I live on State Street. And not only is there a lot of traffic on State Street, I live across the street from an automotive shop that seems to be quite noisy. Could be just my perception, but that's my perception. And there's also been several accidents in front of my block, including the building at State Street, barber shop getting hit a couple times and various things. I definitely think we need to slow things down there. Now, I think that Jamison probably faces much the same issues. And because it's going to become a major arterial, we have to also figure out, you know, how many stop signs do we need to keep that traffic flow from being excessive to the fact that it is going through basically a neighborhood and not even one that has commercial on one side and residential on the other. Traffic isn't going to get easier. And so flow is, you know, a part of it. I think Mark Freiberger does a great job. I've been very impressed with the meetings that I've sat through and listened to him talk about what plans the city has over the next, I think up till 2035. He's got plans for us. And I'm like going, wow, I haven't thought that far out. But, you know, I think that as long as we continue to work in that direction and that we continue to find the funding that we need to do those things and possibly more crosswalks, more, you know, of that sort of thing would be helpful as well. Places where people can safely cross the street and do so without fearing that they're going to get ran over by that driver that just left the overflow. So... Or the old timers.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Do you have any more questions?
I'll ask you one.
Okay.
Okay. What strengths do you think you can bring to the council that the council don't have now?
Well, I think you're a great council, first of all. I do feel that I bring a lot of mixing with other entities within the community. I've worked with E-DESK. I've worked with SCADA. I've worked with the Skagit Business Alliance. As I just mentioned earlier, I hosted the Cascade Loop Association. I also serve on the hospital community board. In all of those things, I see building relationships as essential to what I do now. And having taken on the role with the downtown group as well, it's just one more way to make sure that we're meeting all those needs. And I think I can bring a lot of resources from other communities within our Skagit County and just a little further than that.
Good. Thank you.
So I will ask you one question. And I too appreciate you filling out answers to the questions. So I don't want to become redundant. I'm going to kind of take it in a different direction. And a question that's actually asked by a lot of people when they're being hired. But what I'd like to know is if you could describe a conflict that maybe you've had with a coworker, a council member, maybe even a citizen? And how did you go about resolving that conflict?
I don't believe I have any conflicts with any of the council people, at least not in my perceptions. I have found that, you know, that occasionally there have been times when someone has come in to confront me about something. It might be something as simple as, why are you closing the streets again? What is... Why do you, you know, have our streets closed? Who's going to get into my business if the streets are closed? Well, of course, these are not new events. I didn't invent them. They were there for many years before I took on the job that I'm in. But occasionally, I am the face of the person who they'll come and talk to. I do my best to listen and to answer their questions as best I can. And then if I can't help them with their perceived problem, I might refer them down to the city. But, you know, I think that there are appropriate places for them to put their complaints in.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Brenda?
I wanted to talk about Seadrawley being known as gateway to the North Cascades. I'd like to know what you think the city could do or organizations within the city to entice people to do more than just get gas on their way up to the mountains, to actually come into town and shop here or have a niche store or do more than just pass by and stop at Food Pavilion?
Yeah. No, I agree. One of the components to the gateway thing has always been that it makes it sound as if you've passed through a gate and you're on your way to someplace else. So you want to be wary of using terminology like that. Recently, for example, Anacortes had had a logo that basically said, cruise in, sail out, or something, you know? And they decided that that made it sound as if you weren't going to stay, that you were just going to come there, get on the ferry, and go someplace else. Or you were going to get on your boat and go someplace else. And they've changed that around. And I can't think of their terminology now, but it indicates that this is the place... This is the destination. This is where you want to be. So once again, in order to be a destination place, you have to have things that are places that people want to come to. And that's still something that we're developing. There's no right answer. I definitely do not think we want to be Leavenworth. I do not think we want to be Winthrop. I don't think that those kind of experiences are genuine. I, you know, I don't mind going to Leavenworth. I kind of think it's kind of fun. But at the same time, do I think it's genuine? No. Do I think that somebody from Europe is going to come there and say, wow? It's like, right back home. No. So I would prefer that we work on developing something that is us. And then I don't think that I have all those answers. If I had all those answers, maybe over the past 10 years of being on with the chamber, I could have done more. But I always am open to listening. And I believe that we can all work together to do more for that end.
Good for that, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Paula.
Good.
I have a question about the events that we're talking about, you know, all of the chamber events, the Blast From The Past, Woodfest, Christmas Parade and all of that. Over the years of me helping with some of those, I've noticed some changes. And I was always curious, like, how some of your ideas may have influenced how those events have changed? If you can think of any examples of something that you brought forth and any of those that made a positive change for any of these events?
Well, just last year, one of the things that we added to Blast From The Past was the color run. And it started out with somebody coming in and saying, I think we should have a run, you know, a fun run. And I was thinking, well, we do that at the Fourth of July. And, you know, how can we make it different? So I started looking online and I found these color runs, you know, and the throwing of the color like they do in India for their Holi Festival. And I thought, gosh, that looks like fun. Well, I didn't run it, but I did throw color and I had a lot of fun. And my dog was purple and pink and green. She was very, very cute. As you can imagine, she's a broomer for me, but...
So you've got about a minute left.
Okay. I better stop talking.
Judith? Okay, Judith, one last question?
You know, I was reading her thing and I think I... Well, I've known her for years too, so...
Any quick question?
See what you get.
No?
Does she have a minute? I'd like to hear a closing statement if that's permissible.
Perfect. Would you like to give a closing statement?
Well, I appreciate every one of you listening to me. I know that having ran for council last summer, you all are fairly familiar with what my platform was at that time. And I do hope to be up there on the council with you. So please consider my application.
Thank you so much, Paula. Thank you. Okay. Stacy? Absolutely. We're trying to keep this as relaxed as possible. This is a courageous thing to do, to come before a panel of people and...
Well, thank you. I prepared an opening, if that's okay.
Especially since we're not telling you that you only have three minutes.
Yeah. Sit your name and address.
Let me put some eyes on. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Johnson and city council members. My name is Stacy Pino, and I am very interested in serving as...
I know that having ran for council last summer, you all are fairly familiar with what my platform was at that time. And I do hope to be up there on the council with you, so please consider my application.
Thank you so much, Paula. Thank you. Stacy? Absolutely. We're trying to keep this as relaxed as possible. This is a courageous thing to do, to come before a panel of people and...
Well, thank you. I prepared an opening, if that's okay.
Especially since we're not telling you that you only have three minutes.
Yeah.
Sit your name and address.
Let me put some eyes on. Good evening, Mayor Johnson and City Council members. My name is Stacy Pennow, and I am very interested in serving as council member for the Ward Four position. I've never been in politics before, though I've been interested in our city government for some time. I feel I can bring a fresh perspective as someone new to politics, but also having some knowledge as an observer to the process. I am an open-minded, independent thinker. I am always looking for answers. I have a lot of life experience that I feel would be helpful to making thoughtful decisions to help make Cedar Woolley a great place to live, work and play. I was born in a small town and loved the small-town feel. I love this town, the community, the events, everything about it. And I want to keep and protect that while also promoting responsible growth. I also believe keeping our town's history intact is very important. It is what made Cedar Woolley and it should be preserved. Being a homemaker and a volunteer, I have the time to commit to serving on the council, the availability to be on committees and serving in any way I can. I have the ability to talk to, listen to and understand a broad range of people, and I'm genuinely interested in their needs and doing what I can to help them in a non-biased, respectful way. I have often visited with neighbors and heard some of their concerns, and I want to be able to help them find their answers. I think neighbors working together to help neighbors is a great goal to a better future. I believe one of our top priorities right now is infrastructure. Without it, how can we grow? Also, bringing in more businesses and finding ways to keep them here and thriving. I feel we can do this by enhancing existing businesses. Businesses want to go somewhere that feels relevant and vibrant. I am very excited about the downtown revitalization main street program and would love to be involved with that. Bringing in new businesses would also provide more jobs for the people in the community and more revenue to help support our town services. I would also like to find ways to keep housing more affordable for people who've lived here their whole lives to new people moving into our community and even young people fresh out of school who want to stay here and work but cannot afford to live on their own. How can people on fixed incomes and people who work in services we need, like retail, et cetera, afford to live here? And what can we do to help? I have shown my dedication to the town and the community through all the volunteer work I've done, and I have been attending council meetings fairly regularly for a few years now. And I've liked the forward thinking and encouraged by what I've seen. But I want to do my part to help ensure that things are done responsibly, with integrity and while preserving the history and small-town charm of this place we call home. In closing, I have a quote I'd like to read by Alan Turing. "Sometimes it's the people who no one imagines anything of who do the things no one can imagine." It would be my honor to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I will start at this end this time. So, Judith, do you have a question you'd like to ask Stacy?
Yes. Back to it. What is your top priority for the city and what are your ideas for implementing it?
Well, as I said in my opener, I think that infrastructure is one of the most important things. You need to have roads and sidewalks and, you know, your buildings need to be in fairly decent condition. I think we've done a great job with what we have done so far. I have actually been doing some research on it and have noticed, I don't know if we've taken advantage of all of the grants that we could possibly be doing. The EPA grants and other things to that effect. But basically, working on infrastructure and getting the roads and sidewalks fixed because we need those if we're going to have more people living in town.
Okay. Thank you.
You kind of touched a little bit on affordable housing? And I was wondering what you found in your research on affordable housing and how you think that that could be improved?
I have three pages. How much do you want to hear? Well, part of it I found is that Cedar Woolley only has two hut housing units, which I thought was amazing for the amount of people that live here. They're both quite small. One of them's over on being praised, Cedar Grove Apartments. And it's a family complex that has two, three and four bedroom units that's only available for families. And then over here on State and Township, The Hills View, that is only for 62 and older or disabled, and they only carry one-bedroom units. I don't, I don't understand how anybody can afford to live anymore. I really don't. You have the unassisted market. It's like the working poor. You're not low-income to qualify for anything, but you don't make enough money to pay these outrageous rents. The new apartment complex over here that they've built, 48, whatever it is, their two-bedroom apartment is $1,325 a month. Their studio apartment is $850. It's half the size of this room. I don't understand. I, my hope is, is that we can do something about taxes, especially for the elderly who are being taxed out of their homes. And maybe even look back into accessory dwelling units. I don't know. We need more housing and we need it to be more affordable.
Thank you. Brinda?
Stacy, you touched on wanting to preserve the history of the area of the town besides, obviously, the museum. What other ideas do you have for preserving local history?
Well, you know, I, the revitalization thing, I'm just hoping that they don't go and fix up all the buildings where they paint over all the cool murals that are on them and things to that effect, you know? That brings out the history of the town, the chainsaw carvings that are downtown. I'm hoping all that stays and they don't change that. But talking about a niche for our town, I think our logging history and the history of this town, it should be our niche. I mean, we should try to promote that and bring people in. I mean, that's the biggest part of our town and what made this town.
Thank you. Thank you. Chuck?
Thank you, Stacy. And I read your resume, it's pretty impressive, and you're well-qualified for the position. I would like to ask you, if you were a council member and an important subject came up that was, you know, beneficial to the city, but your constituents were all opposed to it, then how would you vote?
That's a good question. Being a public servant, you're serving your constituents. So, in the most parts, you should be voting the way they feel. Now, if I had a different opinion on the matter, I would want to share that with them, explain my side and how I feel, why it should be this way. And if they still don't agree with that, then I would vote that they, the way they want me to vote.
Good answer. I think a council member should be neutral and think for themselves.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Carl?
Hi, Stacy.
Hi, Carl.
Thanks so much for applying, and I really appreciated the effort that you put in in your application packet, the letter of interest of getting letters in with the packet of support. And I really appreciated your comments in your opening statement about how you love this town and the depth and breadth of your life experience that you bring forward in your application. I have the same question that I had for Paula, is that we're connected with Ward Four and Ward Six with the two very busy streets, Jameson and State. And what do you feel would be the proper use to calm that traffic, using enforcement, using education and engineering?
Using tire strips?
Tire strips would be effective once. How would you fund the lawsuit? Right. But, but thank you.
Oh, you know, a lot of Cedar Woolley is a racetrack. It depends on who you talk to and what street they live on as to whether Talcott is a racetrack, Warner and Forth during school hours is a racetrack.
And Klinger is too.
Pardon?
Klinger is too.
Oh, okay. You know, I don't know where, anywhere that isn't, to be honest with you, depending on the time of day. I wish I knew an answer to that question. I'm assuming that for the most, well, you know, I don't even know if there's post-speed limits. I think everybody is supposed to know what a residential street speed limit is. I agree more stop signs would be a good idea. I think four-way stops are a great idea. I think it makes the traffic flow better. But honestly, short of those tire strips, Carl, I don't know.
Thank you. Jared?
Hi, Stacy. My question would be, and just kind of going off something that you brought up, what do you propose or what is your solution for what you titled affordable housing and not low-income housing? Can you expand on that? And what do you think, what's your solution for affordable housing in Cedar Woolley?
Well, you know, I did a lot of research on that as well. You know, the middle class, the working class who don't qualify for low-income housing and can't afford to live in the new apartment units over here. Currently, when we moved to this town, rent was easy. It was cheap. You could find a good place to live for a decent amount of money. As the town's grown and inflation and everything else that's happened, prices have gone up and wages haven't. I would like to look into some kind of maybe helping with subsidies that we could, there was something I read somewhere about using subsidies, helping with tax breaks for someone, a developer who could then come in and use some of the subsidies to make some of the units less expensive than others. So that more people would be able to, like a multi, a multi-unit, what was it called? Ah, here we go. Subsidies to be stretched and then including them with inclusionary zoning, which I am not exactly quite sure what that means. But, yeah, if you use subsidies and then you are able to have some of the units cheaper so that more people can afford to live there, I think that's one helpful thing. Something I read that I'm not quite sure about says that more, more housing available drives the rents down. Now, I'm not so sure I really want to see a bunch of those apartment complexes popping up all over town, but I don't know, maybe having some more places to live would cause, you know, competition between the apartments to help lower some of the prices. I wish I knew, I'm looking so hard into figuring out some way that people can afford to stay and live here.
Just to follow along the same lines, do you think job creation, increasing the industries and job promotion?
Of course, that's true. And, but they're going to need living wage jobs. But bringing in new businesses and is going to create new jobs, more jobs, and hopefully for the local people to work and be able to afford to live.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, housing, that's an issue that the whole county, half the nation is working on. It is complex, yes. So, you had mentioned in your opening statement that you've, you've had a lot of life experiences and you believe that you could bring them to the council, to Cedar Woolley, to offer some guidance, some direction? Do you want to expound upon that?
Okay. Carl's heard all of this already. I've lived in a lot of different places. I was, like I said, I was born in a small town in Joe's City up in Four Corners area, and it was one of them blink-you-miss-it things. But I've lived in eight states in the United States and have been in every one of them but Alaska and Hawaii. We moved around a lot when I was a kid. I've been extremely poor, where you didn't know if you were going to eat or if you were going to have that bologna sandwich the next day. I've lived where my mother had to move us out in the middle of the night before they evicted us. I've been through a lot in my life. I was homeless for a little while, too. And I just think that I have a lot of understanding for people of all ranges of people. You know, I've worked hard, I've got to where I am now, and I feel that I'm doing pretty good. So, I feel I have this background that I can talk to anybody. It doesn't matter who it is, what they've been through. I can listen to them and help them and understand where they're coming from. And that's why I think that I can help being on the council.
Okay. Thank you. Judith, do you have another question?
Well, did you give any thought to the little spiel we had in there about standing committees and which ones you'd like to be on?
Well, as far as the committees, I see that they've already been picked, so...
Oh, no, we have, we have slots.
You're changing, yeah, I know. So, the new council member is going automatically into those spaces, correct? But anyway, I was, I, my biggest, I put them in order of what I felt more important. And, and planning and the business development were the two that I really was interested in for most of the reasons that I've been talking about. Public safety would be third on my list there because that's, that's important to me, too. Fourth, I had Parks and Rec and utilities and finance were kind of down there at the bottom of the spectrum. But honestly, I would be fine with any committee. I feel I have a lot to offer to any of them. And just because it's one I like better doesn't mean I wouldn't mind if I wasn't on it.
Thank you. Jermaine?
Well, I got lots of questions all jumbled up in there. I guess I wanted to ask, I'm trying to figure out how to frame it. I know that you help out a lot around town with some of the events as well, and I was just curious what your favorite event is and why.
My favorite event? Oh, gosh. That's a close one between the Christmas and the blast. Probably Christmas, though, just because it's my favorite time of year. I just love the downtown, the nighttime with all the lights and the parade and the community getting together. I just, I think it's a wonderful, awesome thing that we do.
Stacy, I know you're involved in your neighborhood and you talk to your neighbors and so forth. What kind of programs do you think that the city could promote or offer to increase awareness around neighborhoods for crime prevention such as block watch or...
I think that would be awesome. In fact, a couple of my neighbors, we tend to kind of do that already in our neighborhood, even though it's sort of off the record or whatever you would call it, you know, we're kind of keeping an eye out over each other all the time. If somebody sees something, they call the other one, what do you see and things to that effect. But I think block watch programs are a great idea, getting the neighborhood together to help watch over one another. I think that's an awesome thing. It would be nice to be able to try to get it going in more neighborhoods than just what we kind of are doing in mine. But I think, you know, you get out there and you talk to the people. If they're, if they're having issues and they're coming to you and saying this is how, you know, if they're having these problems, then, you know, we should talk to them and say, okay, why don't we, do you want to get together and try to do something like this? I think it would be an amazing thing to get everybody in the town, you know, all the different neighborhoods involved. And then we could come here and have a little meeting and say, okay, you know, this is what you need to do and what you can do and what we can do to help you.
Great. Thank you. Chuck?
Yes, Stacy, what would be your vision of what the city should look like in the next five or 10 years?
I wrote that one down, but it's, it's long. Let's see. Okay, my vision for Cedar Woolley. Well, I agree that we need a vibrant town with lots of places to live, work and play, with more businesses to promote spending locally and provide services that towns need, while bringing in the revenue to support our town without having to raise taxes, while also keeping the history and small-town charm intact, a great place for everyone to live. I would love to see a beautiful downtown area, a place that everybody can come down and shop, a place that has the services and things that the people in the town need, plus things that'll attract the tourists to stop when they're coming through. And beyond that, just keeping the history intact and, and having our neighborhoods the way they are so that, you know, the people of the town are enjoying their town and we can still have the vibrant downtown area that's bringing in the businesses and the people that we need spending money.
Thank you. Carl?
I have a question regarding... I have a question regarding, in your life experiences, and you may, may use your experience in the cornucopia of volunteering that you've done throughout your life with certain boards and organizations, even maybe a museum. But can you give an example of maybe working within a group, within a team environment, where you were disagreeing with where the majority was going, but you were able to make your points without being disagreeable? Can you think of an example that you could relate to us?
Honestly, I can't.
Were you always in the majority?
Usually. You know, when you're, when you're planning things and you're trying to get something put together and things to do, you just, people are coming in with their ideas. Everybody discusses their ideas and you build off of them. I've not personally been where I've had a conflict of that happening. You know, sometimes you can come up with an idea that after somebody else lists their idea, it may not be, your idea didn't seem as great to begin with. So, you know, I think just working together and getting it, getting it done is the way to be.
Okay. Thank you.
I have no further questions, Madam Mayor.
All right. Judith? Jermaine?
Can't think of any right now, actually.
Brenda?
Stacy, I'll ask you one of the same questions I asked Paula. What do you think the city could do as a whole to entice tourists to actually come into town before they head on over to cross the mountains?
Yeah. You know, and, and Paula's answers were spot-on. You know, things like the Woolley Market that has the, the mountain shop in it, you know, that, that's a good place for people who are going to their mountains. They can stop there and they have their groceries and their mountain supplies right there. And I guess they have fishing supplies, too, because that's a big thing around here, and we lost our store that had all of our fishing and sporting goods. You know, I think maybe getting another sporting goods store in. You know, you want things that, that people are coming to do, you need the services that provide that stuff. And I think working, you know, you talk to your businesses, you, you find successful businesses like the Woolley Market, and you say, if you ask them, what do they see would be work here to help draw in more people? And, you know, if you're talking to the business owners, it's like I'd read somewhere, is successful businesses draw other businesses. So if you talk to these businesses and you find out, what do you think would work well in town with, to be beside here with your business to help draw people in? And I think that it would be a good idea to get them together and talk to them and see what they think, and then try to draw those sort of, sort of businesses in, so that tourists and local alike would be able to shop in town.
Thank you. So I am going to ask you about the library and everything that we have been through over the last year. Given the conflicts that arose, I'd like to hear your thoughts or opinion on how it was handled by the council. Would you have done anything different? Were there strengths and weaknesses? What was your opinion regarding all of that?
I personally think that the library combining was a great thing, because I'm big on community, and that combined library is bringing the whole community together, and I think that's an amazing thing, so I'm glad it happened. I was here for all of that, almost every meeting. It was some interesting meetings. In some ways, I wish that there could have been a little more communication from the council to some of the people when they were speaking. I understand why that wasn't something you could do. For the most part, I think it was all handled well. You have your people who weren't real happy, who were here every time, and, you know, what, what can you do there, just saying the same thing over and over again? We try, I see that you guys tried what you could to answer their questions and to explain to them why you couldn't answer some of their questions. But overall, I thought it was felt, it was handled pretty well.
And would you have handled it differently? Is there anything you would have handled differently?
Not having been up there, where you are, I don't know how I could say how I would handle it differently.
Okay. That's a fair question. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck?
Well, the only question I have is, Stacy, is what strength do you think you can bring to the council that the council don't have now?
Oh, well, see, and I don't like the way that question's phrased, because I have no issues with anyone on the council. I don't feel that there is a weakness on our council. I think you all have your own individual ways, and, and I fully agree with that because I, I would have that myself. But strengths that I think I would bring is, for one, a deep desire to keep the history and the small-town charm intact, of course. But I think I have a fresh perspective. I'm an independent thinker, and life experience, I feel, gives me thoughtful, non-biased decisions. Basically, a great love for the town and a desire to be living in it, and what else Yeah, I just, I just feel that I'm someone who has thoughts and ideas that I really and honestly feel would help the council and the community.
Very good. Thank you.
Carl?
I am so ready for a closing statement.
It was a long opening statement.
Jared, do you have one last question? Okay. Do you have a closing statement? Would you like to make a closing statement?
I don't, but thank you so much for your consideration and your time, and, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, Stacy. Okay, at this time then...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I would like to take this point of personal privilege to thank those that presented themselves. It takes a lot to get up there before us, before this panel, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Carl. So at this time, we are going to close this special meeting, and I, too, want to thank you all for coming out. Like I said, it's, it's a courageous thing to do, and you had some great answers, and it was great to get to know you even better. We think we know you, and then we have questions like this, and we realize, no, that there's a whole lot more. So thank you so much, and...